May 4th, 2023, hearing of the zoning board of the hills of the town of Grand Island is now in session. This meeting may also be joined by a Zoom, through our web page, and do it live on YouTube. I'd like you to hear some numbers and board, the arrows, John Brown, Adric Silius, Tim Phillips, who's not able to make it tonight, and V L. Irrendy, who's an alternate, she may be here later. And I'm the chairman, Robert Maschmann. And also Lieutenant Stein is calling for Officer Nick Coltrane. The members of the board this evening will be taken in the order of which they appear on the agenda. The board shall hear and decide appeals pursuant to the provisions and the laws of the state of New York. This is a legal hearing, and all participants should consider themselves to be sworn to make accurate statements in charge of bringing all pertinent facts to the board's attention. Any discovery of false testimony and or withholding the facts would be grounds for a ruling reviewed and reconsideration. As each agenda item is addressed upon, one representative will be trusted to present their request. After the board hears from the opponent, we'll hear from anyone wishing to speak or against each issue. All parties will be required to give their name and address for the record. Once a determination has been made, any party feels agreed by the same decision, they file Article 78 proceeding with the State Supreme Court in the thirty days of filing of the second decision in the state, excuse me, from the town clerk's office. Hearing will now commence, and first, please give your name and address for the record. That would be four six one four east, we're on the Douglas Frost. That's good. First, first of all, you're very, I don't know if you're aware of that. We are. Tell us what you'd like to do.
My intention is to build a pavilion on the piece of concrete, which is part of a shed that's currently down by the public estate property. Probably sixteen feet wide by twenty feet, which is the same dimensions as the shed portion without the overhang. It would be built by the adage, made out of mostly large wood, with a metal. I have no intentions of filling the side because of my per shade, because currently there's much shade down.
No covering on this side at all?
That's all.
We probably will, we'll try to see. Anyone want to come forward in regards to the variance of forty six fourteen eastern? Would you like to make a motion to close this portion of the meeting? Would you like to make a motion to close this portion of the meeting? Maybe who's, I've got it seconded by Dan, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. We do have one letter in favor. Do have one letter, yes. I particularly have a problem on this, this property. We've had problems with it in the past, nothing to do with yours here. But we have had problems when they had to reduce the size of the building by approximately, I believe about fifty percent. Yes. Okay. I also understand it's open.
Well, originally, there was a question about the height and the street it was then, so that's why I put the footage on the own first, because I would put it up. The problem wasn't we put it up, we went over the floor and that, and that portion had to come down. So putting something closer to the river would make sense, but using the shade down there, it's already there.
I think I got a concern with, with the additional hundred and four square feet of variance.
Oh, John, I'm siding to.
I guess the property along the river are always concerned, aside buildings are putting out what's going on. And every lot, I understand, is unique. To increase the size of the variance for the side of the square foot. Of the building down there. What kind of door are we opening up? So if you go funny, I said, if the building down there wants to put a little pavilion out front, give them shade, and I understand it means it's a beautiful property, well maintained, very nice. The hundred square foot variance, hundred and four square foot variance, real concern.
I don't see any height variance on here. Yeah, the roof line is, the peak of the new roof would be the same as the current roof that's with. That would have variance for it. With that, I wasn't wearing time, probably.
We have a seven foot height variance, something like that. You know, second barriers, it's the very first one.
You're right. And actually, one thing about your concern about the access square foot, almost every pavilion built down there, or every covered on it, long, short, year, are as big as the one I left or bigger. So the cant lens is a little concerned, hopefully, today. Well, there's a reason. I don't exactly know the data about some very much. There, there's no square foot. There's no one, because you have the rest of the height, you pretty much don't have. Some side here, but there, there are setbacks. Because these buildings are so big, change the law, that's why they don't think.
I don't know.
There was one, very close to me, five, because I did. Plus, do you have more questions? You have more questions? Okay. What else?
No, the only one I can think of is the one where they killed the wrong lady, remember? When they mentioned names, they had to take the back, which was on property magazine. And that was real close to.
I guess I got a problem with this one, because we were last owner, we finished our down stuff, it's well oversized. Certain anymore square foot. You're not, the reason, you have to understand the reason behind the rationale is we gave the pass, because it was much bigger and also on top of it, he obviously didn't have a permit, he might way past the permit, okay? We tried to keep the shoreline, as John will say, it's a little bit different than the rest of the island, okay? Because there's a view of the river and things, I think. You have one person speaking in favor of you, one neighbor pulling out of the wall, okay? So, so as far as I can, so, 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 would that be inside? I got a problem with adding more square foot, you know, you're the new guy, okay, compared to.
And that was part of the reason I'm only building to the building portion, because my understanding, again, I wasn't here for it, that overhang to the side is the concern you have, that was still too big in the past. So rather than they go the whole length of that roof, I want to stay within the parameters of what originally was allowed. Originally, that was my understanding, you know? And I wasn't here, my original understanding is the portion of that building, it was a half, that was what was permitted, and that little overhang, that was not the, I'm trying to say within the full permitted area. See, what he did, he got it from that, everything sucks in a row, and he's always that much bigger. Right. Right, I understand, that's why there's that overhang alongside the building. I get that, again, that's why I said, I'm staying within the sixteen foot, rather than the, it's sixteen, and maybe like twenty two and a half or something, if you're in the full, I'm only going fifteen. Again, if I'm saving it.
I got it, I got all of those thoughts, so I can understand, so I get it, it's just that. It almost feel like saying, okay, why are we taking away from that job on the first time? You know, just like all of a sudden, I have a square foot.
Definitely wired, he was going, why didn't he listen to us through that?
Well, I get that too, because it does block the doorway, so that's why I say I'm teared.
Because the way I'm going, I don't think I'm really blocking anything else in the theater.
I don't disagree with that.
I'm not going to lie.
I got that, I can see that on the part.
Really, the very important, that's our town, where's you? There were some buildings built that you didn't think would drop. However, that wasn't a real concern at the time, we had two variances killed, because our party, Tyler had to get sold, since changed.
Another thing, as soon as you have to look at it, it's accessory structure, it's another building, okay, it's most not connected to the building that's there, so then all of a sudden, now we get all these people along the shoreline, come back and say, we want more accessory phones. Kind of like what you were saying about the other guy down the street, but unfortunately, you got it before the rules were changed by the town. So.
That you like the money type thing, it's just open, you just go in and have the shelter. Then it won't attachment to the building instead of being a separate thing.
Correct, because right now, that's another thing that's on the.
Well, if I, if I, I'm better off if I attach it to the third floor, that's the thing.
Well, then I don't think you need the accessory structure, because it would be more of a structure, that'd be the other reason to think.
But yeah, the issue I have on my side, the atmosphere of building this, they don't typically, if they said that, we don't typically do that. If I could get them, that's going to make it like easier, maybe than make it, et cetera. And if that, I don't think, I don't think you were. I don't think attaching it to the building makes it.
Well, going straight up, it wouldn't be blocking, it wouldn't be the other stuff.
As I said, maybe the square foot is increased, the downlaws change, now all this.
What would it have to be printed?
About two hundred square feet, it's going to be ten hundred and four.
So if you did two hundred, you could still do it, still work with that, so can I?
He's already at five hundred. Yeah, we had a problem, this type of thing totally changes a lot, we have a real problem. We have room control, but.
You change that size of the, you know.
Can you think further? No, I guess it's in your hands.
I would think, okay, if you're participating in working, you can't do anything without help.
Yeah, it's unable to make a motion in regard to forty six fourteen eastern.
I'd like to let him keep table, and have him have a chance to see if he resolves, because that's a really good piece of property.
I agree with that, I don't know how to change that.
I, I, I won't, I, I came on your face, we can use something, but it's going to affect the same way next month to do it now, I, 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 I don't have the ability. But if they wanted to, I would see if there's something, come up with a different plan or something, I, I mean, I'm just saying now, if it's already at the limit now, there's really nothing we can do to really change that, without, or boards including.
So beyond the other, do you like those?
A lot of people think that a pass on, if they retract out, maybe, you know, that's the only other option that you can do about a permanent structure. But as of now, we wouldn't need your approval in order to do anything.
I, I don't see any point, because to your point, if you're not willing to give me a variance for any increased footage, there's nothing I can do, and I think it works. Because if I have to audit audit, maybe I'll talk to the building department. Well, I can do an outing without a permit, but. Right, here, here's the, here's the issue, why I didn't want to do an outing. An outing is as expensive, almost long term, more expensive than a permanent structure. Because you get an ongoing expense of having to take it on, on and off, and the fabric only lasts eight to ten years. It's another six or seven thousand dollars, even another piece of fabric. Whereas if I had built something permanent, it was steel roof, it's certainly going to outlast me. I wouldn't have the maintenance, I wouldn't have to take it on, take it off. Honestly, when you take it off those structures, you have a fairly ugly looking aluminum frame sitting there. I just thought this was a better option, a better looking option, probably add more value to the property. So that's the reason why I want to go with this type of structure. I don't see a point in table. You do think I should stay on? What's my option? I mean, how do I? How do I move forward?
By table, and you're going to be asking for less variance, as like Dan said. Two, there is a question that needs to be cleared up in the building department regarding overhang square footage. A lot of instances, we let people put up pole barns or whatever, with overhang on the side, and it's not included in the square footage. The reason that this is different is because you're not attaching, maybe if you attach it, that overhang may not be included in the square footage, but that needs to be worked out in the building department.
Do we know when that would, is there a tape?
Well, we would ask for a table, and sometime between this meeting and next meeting, we hope to have no clarification on that, maybe.
And then I guess in that case, I would ask the table. And portion by, by, across lots of tables, to all in favor? I think by John? All in favor? Good. That's more. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next, the headline is. Fifteen seventy nine. Mr. Plust.
Yes, good evening, Howard. Well, that, David, uh, John West, one five seven nine, developer. Okay, I'm requesting five of this variance, uh, three years ago, COVID hit, and it's kind of got tabled for a bit unearned. But I'm looking, I live on the corner of Bedell and Jamestown, and I hope we put a fence in. Six foot high, roughly, I think variance is four, twenty five feet, to make a fence over from the property line, there's some people to what my neighbor across the street has. I discussed this with all impacted neighbors, including the two that have basically faced and fought up to, they've, they've said that they have no objections to this. One of my neighbors, across the street, would be facing the fence, he had no objection to it, and Scott Schaefer across the street. I talked to many times, I just didn't, running over the last couple of days, I've been deciding off, I can stay with no job. I think this, again, this was approved three years ago, but if the point when COVID hit, wasn't able to put it in at that point. We have a form of property that's been in about five years ago, which is the need for the fence, people want a little privacy. Our grandchildren are in town all the time, they were, they were young, this was four years ago. And my ninety five year old mother-in-law also lives with us, who tends to, you know, spend time out there and kind of needs a proper situation. We pull a safety practice, and one thing that I noticed, I went out there and met his, while I was down, and, no, your neighbor across the street on the white dust, yeah, his, his, my senior's is different, I just think this is one of those. It's thirty feet from the edge of the building. Okay? And according to this, I don't know one of the sidewalks. That's because it's a property line, and that, yeah, I don't throw it, so I'm a little confused about that. I like it all my stuff, when I, when I lay things out, that I mentioned off of, my neighbor's fence, which is on my survey, and shows how far that is to the property line, I was going over for a second, someone coming in from, I found no rebar in the, in the ground.
I was just saying, I would refer to the property survey, I've got the, the, the.
I didn't see that. Since it was ten feet, it doesn't show ten feet where, and so the sidewalk.
Yeah, the sidewalk's happened, you had a survey, but it's on the right one.
It won't take, yeah, I mean, it's hard to say off the survey, how far is it off the sidewalk? You know, it would help in the future if somehow they could put stakes, where the fence is going to go, so when you go there, you just pull, you take. You measure to try to engage, yes, with it, with struggle.
Yep. I had a tough time figuring out these.
I mean, I, I don't have any qualms, if it's absolutely the same distance on the, your fence from, on your side is the same distance on the other side.
Which is how I set it up when it came up.
I, I don't have any qualms, if that's where it's going to help it, and it doesn't show on here. But I can find it, I mean, exactly where that's coming, sometimes it's taking force. Think of it easier. Yeah, it's hard to measure from the right away, uh, that's supposed to be. But it doesn't go right down the whole line. Just put a mark, make it easier. We got up to a tape measure, trying to figure out what's going on there.
I had a couple holes in the ground.
I missed it.
I, I have red, red holes in, in the ground, it's a plane over five feet at my garage, and then over by my neighbor's property, um, yeah, there are three red holes in the ground.
Was it snowing?
Pretty good morning, if it's on your act, is that what counts up?
I'll do this with wood for you.
Absolutely, your neighbor, trying to work with you, yeah, your neighbor is thirty feet from the, you know, thirty, thirty feet of light from the, category on the road, or racing up to the sidewalk, you do the same thing. Absolutely, and that's basically how I measured it when I first did all this with that, yeah, I made it equal to what my neighbor had, and then made sure it was at a point where we can get approved when I talked to folks three years ago. Yeah, no, I made it exactly, line up exactly the same. And I can do that going, putting out, when we remeasure, for when the time people actually show up, when we remeasure, I make sure that that is the minimum.
I have a question. You leave this back in Florida, and I came upon CBA, what was you in for with that?
I was approved, I was approved, and I would actually approve, I would actually approve way around for a six month extension because COVID had. But then it snowed in three years. I actually stopped it last year, because we were looking to do it last year, and the gentleman said, you know, well, you're there for, we would probably out pay it, but how if I'm not with you here, and I have problems, we're on the road, where I get it, just from the neighbor or somebody, say, you know, if there's an issue, and then everybody goes, that was, well, this thing expired a year ago, rip it off. And I don't have that, you see it all, so, and renter, renter pays us a hundred and fifty bucks, and make sure that everybody's blessing, let's, then have her forgiveness later. Or career improvement, I suppose. Right.
The brand is that done, because basically, way past the six month extension period, and so now it's, sounds like for a hundred and fifty dollar fine to come back to this.
Yeah, well, we were to work it, uh, you need to, and you keep the fronts thirty feet from the edge of the dome. Yep, that would work, I would work, I definitely would work it out, I'd make it thirty feet, minimum. If we're going to see, sure, my nick is ready when I'm logged in.
No.
Okay, what I'm, I just like to. You have a copy of the sign off from my neighbors, so I'll have my file, or, or anyone here, let us see, well, come forward in regard to fifteen seventy nine.
Okay. Okay, who is, uh, who is making motion to close this portion of the meeting?
Not secondary.
Motion back, right, you're saying it back then?
I got no thought.
Okay. What is the motion, thirty three, question, Howard?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by very.
Fifteen seventy nine, the Dell Road, to re, let him reapply for his fencing, thirty feet from front end. Or just from.
Seconded by, yeah, by John, all in favor? Okay, rationale.
Senator Patrick.
If I receive, and it wants to move forward.
And he's going to need a, 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 oh.
Okay. Seconded by Betty, seconded by. Also, my Dan, all in favor?
Let's have some.
And a building permit, and put it up. So we'll come back. There's no building.
Four hundred feet from the road actually makes it so much easier to rent, so that way I know I can shoot it up. I appreciate it, thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Okay, I'm in three, 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 nine, eight, east river, Kevin Turner.
Carter, name of the address. Isn't that, uh, Kevin Carter, for the gate, and very, very nice, for the road. There's almost what you'd like to do. You know, I actually have two of them, I have about the house below three years ago, and we wanted to split shed on the water side with a, with a. We have a hundred feet of front, which, you know, ten, uh, important, shed, we have chairs, and we probably various things out there. Um, that's a little improvement, and it would look, we're similar to our house, our house, it's like cedar brown, if they go, it's in the back. It's also right next to a, 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 path of woods, that, uh, it would be pretty close, like, few feet away, and it doesn't block anything to view at all for the river. I talked to my neighbors, um, meeting next door, and two or three down, near a bar, if you down, they're available, but, um, one of them, when I said, see if they want to hear, but that's, I thought that would be, but, uh, I should have had everybody something off, but you're talking to the neighbors, if, and they, it doesn't block anyone's view to the water at all, because of your trees, like, you're a little loud, it's got some trees on it next line, and, uh, so it's, uh, basically just a storage, and something we could use in somewhere, just to keep our shop in, and the general purpose, like, then there's another one that's, uh, the front, the side of our house is very plain looking, we wanted to put a front porch, you got a tiny little porch entrance way, we want to put a, a bigger front porch covered with, uh, a.
That's a separate, that's a separate item. We're going to run it. One item.
This is for the. Homehouse.
The first, the first one to the, the accessory structure on the shoreline, for shore, water side, number three. To show the, um.
To show the um. This is actually just living near the. No, it's coming out of my book, yeah.
Nick is ready, one online? Anybody want to speak in regards to three, three, nine, eight?
We'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Motion by Dan, seconded by, all in favor? Okay.
I don't really have a problem with the structure on Riverside. The three, three, nine, eight, East River Road, and on the outside, it was those.
All right. Well, we have three different variants.
Right. I'm gonna go ahead and. All right, the um, variants for an accessory structure, fifty-three feet from the center of the final way, a variance of forty-seven feet for three, three, nine, eight, East River Road.
Motion by John, seconded by, seconded by Dan, all in favor? Okay, second number, and seven foot high branch.
Yeah, now I got Riverside accessory structure, eleven feet height, uh, the variance of seven foot is needed for three, three, nine, eight, East River Road.
Make motion.
Uh, that's my, that's my.
Okay, second by Dan, all in favor? And third motion.
Third one's the Riverside accessory structure, four feet from the side of the line. Um, the variance is for seven feet. And that is for three, three, nine, eight, East River Road.
Motion by John, seconded by Dan, all in favor? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. No, I'm actually.
Now you can come back to the next one.
Yeah, okay. Kind of like. Okay. I would say, Kevin Carter. Okay. You're just like before in four foot backyard shutback branch.
No living space is for a front porch and a. Thank thirty. I have a picture, my neighbor has a very similar line. We have, they're also kind of plain, not great. Our house is way right here, kind of a plain looking house. And the one on the far end actually has a, something that we're looking to do, like the front porch with a, I can store it out. Two, it really makes me over there, it would be a great improvement.
Like one on the left.
Yes.
One of the right there, front porch. Yes.
Okay, anything further?
Yeah.
Take anyone online? And would anyone like to come forward in regard to three, three, nine, eight, East River?
We'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Motion by Dan, seconded by. My buddy, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I have my.
No, I'll make a motion for three, three, nine, eight, East River Road, a required backyard setback for a uh, deck. A four-foot front yard setback, variance is supposed to be needed, that's the proposed.
A motion by John, also seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Hi. All right, thank you.
Okay. Is rationale.
We did it.
It's uh, it's the uh, pleasure of having you sitting up on the second deck, little decoration, uh, proves a property. It looks very nice.
Okay, number five, uh, live shot, three, seven, zero, nine. Yeah, I am. Shot.
Go shot, thirty-seven, oh, nine, East River Road, and that.
That's what you like to do.
So we uh, have an existing uh, small homehouse that has a pump and electrical uh, feed, we've got there.
Right.
Uh, that's just in there and it's shown, I believe in our survey that you have. And uh, over the years through the water, uh, it comes over the break wall when water rises. Uh, we've got problems with it, it was very small, gold structure, it's only about uh, three and a half feet wide, about four and a half feet long, about four feet high. Uh, very difficult to get in through the surface of, uh, and the pump was gold on the ground and water comes up, freezes the pumps and pipes. And you'll have a lot of problems. So um, what I'd like to do is replace in time, make it a little bit larger, a little bit higher. Um, so it's somewhat a shed, but it's really still a shed, now it would be a little bit smaller and the uh, the water. So I'm not trying to uh, make it like a pavilion or anything larger. Uh, trying to keep the small, the size small, so about the uh, ten foot long by seven foot wide uh, pad with a small gold building, uh, will be, I was planning on like a leaning style building with a single pitch roof. Uh, so it would be like just about a six foot clear on the inside, and seven foot clear on the one side, so I could get in and just work on it. I would raise the pump and the electric higher up, so I don't have to worry about the water problems and just a single block. The exact uh, detail of the structure, we need to work out with the building department, but we need to understand that this build, this location is in the flood. And the old uh, pad that was there was not, did not have any foundation, slat on grade. And we actually had a bunch of subsidence uh, with it, the water up and down, water to the. Uh, so we intended to put uh, some piers in that would give it a foundation, perhaps raise it a little bit up above the existing grade. Uh, the building department recommended that because it helps against the water infiltration and stuff that. And they have a few other structural things they want us to work out with them. So far, when the water does come up, it could be able to pass through it. So we can accommodate all that, recommend, first thing we do. Because we are both from the property line and we're at the height over the four foot, over the two. Question?
Uh, yeah.
I got one. You said seven foot high, that you're gonna have to raise up the building. You're only asking for a four-foot experience, but is that gonna be a no? It it should be, yes, so we're we're coming up, uh, what 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 our plan was, is we don't want to have a big, big foundation sticking up above the ground, so we're trying to find a balance. So our plan is to come up about six or eight inches from the old, uh, the reason I picked that is uh, very recently, uh, we had a high water event where the water reached all the uh, break walls. And that's the highest I've seen in thirty-five years that I've been, I've lived on the water on the bike. That's one of the highest I've ever seen. So um, that level fits the top of the slab to about the highest point that I've ever seen the water. And also looking at the flood plain maps, uh, it seems to be appropriate there, so I'm kind of only raising the foundation a little. And on the inside, I'm not looking for a great big tall structure, just digging up so I can get in there, work on the pump, so it'll be left, oh, it's a minute. Uh, and maybe some small, small storage, some parts or whatever. So it's, I'm trying to not be a crucial where, I could go an eight foot high, but what's it gonna do if it doesn't do it yet? Don't mean if these anybody's, the fence will do it. So I'm trying to make it big enough that he looks fine.
The um, I guess that's one of my concerns, the extra height and view, and I I can get back in and take a look at that as well, so. Tell me about the uh, sightlines for your neighbors. So what does that do?
So we have uh, they have to bring up a picture of my neighbor's yard, and I've got a bunch of other pictures you have too. Uh, this is a picture of my house looking for my neighbors. And we have a fence down between the two property lines. And he has a very large shed there, which has been there for many years.
This is your neighbor's?
This is my neighbor's shed, that's correct, and I knew my property was to the left there. And uh, and this one here is. These are, these are additional ones that are down East River Road, and I took pictures of, these are all much larger than mine, that I'm proposing. But these are also ones where you can look at property lines and see other uh, different, these are all within two miles of where we are. And that kind of shows that uh, what I'm asking for is not nearly as big, but it's very similar to mine, you know. Let's break that, make sure I'm right, this is a neighbor's shed. They're gonna be over here, saw these trees and brush them away.
Yeah, closing to the water, if you look at the survey, I think you guys have.
Those are just other sheds, some of them. Just go for the first one of that, yeah. That's what I provided for, that's not his shed, that's neighbor's. He'll be here, he's over here, so it's a whole tree by the.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So you're not gonna, you're not blocking anywhere, you, because it's already bottom line.
Here's the survey, that's the frame shed, that's on the picture, I got that here. Yeah, there you go, nine hundred and foot nine, and I got, I got what is our location? I just gotta point out, yeah, I can't see that halfway, you're exactly right.
Uh, yeah, there you go. And there's the, there's the survey, it's left there, that's the frame that's in the picture he just gave it. Frame shed, mine proposing, a little bit larger, this is the old, this is the old survey with the gold command lines. But that's a little bit, it's exactly. Yep, and it is well shielded with uh, we just invented breaks. Uh, the fence line doesn't continue all the way to the present uh, setback rules, but it does have trees and charred. You can have that. No, I don't want you to look for it. No, I don't, I don't see the sideline.
I see it.
No, I don't, I don't.
Online. Hey, anyone like to come forward in regard to thirty-seven, zero, nine, East River?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion by Dan, seconded by. Ready? All in favor?
Hi.
I don't see any. Good use. I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion for the height for the accessory structure on the shoreline at thirty-seven, oh, nine, East River Road. To give a four-foot variance.
Motion by Dan, seconded by. By Betty, all in favor?
Hi. I'll make the second motion for side yard setback for the accessory storage at thirty-seven, oh, nine, East River Road for a five point six foot side yard setback. I'll second.
Motion by Dan, seconded by John, all in favor?
Hi.
And there's, there's a third all the way, isn't there?
Don't see a third.
Six feet for side yard, five point six for side yard.
Five point six for the variance amount.
Is that right?
No.
No, it was. Hang on, sorry.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Quite a project going on there.
Yeah, hopefully we're gonna be done by next month.
I would hope you'd want to be done, maybe.
I I'm trying, we did a lot, we placed a break wall on the dock.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Holy cow.
So hopefully, uh, we're looking good for another month. Just a little.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Rational.
I will find it be an obstruction or a way shakes of floor. Small. You gotta make it better for the core engineers, it'll be out of the water, so it'll save the uh, homehouse. So also that must enable it.
Okay, the last time on the phone is fifty-one, twenty-four, East River Road, and Cherry.
Um, I'm representing Cherry for five, one, thirty-four, East River. Um, so basically, they want to, they did purchase the homes, that the occupant, we're trying to make plans for some changes on the current front porch, um, that they had on the house, you can't reach it on it, the water properties, they want to add a little front porch, uh, to the front side of the house, and then outside. Basically, it's a lante, it's that there right now currently, that runs the front length of the house, we're putting out ten foot, we might go over and around the side a little bit, um, standing up again, it's gonna be a porch, no railings, no, and get it out there during the, during the river. So we're actually gonna put a little. Maybe sixteen to eighteen inch patio, tracks, um, packing. And that's, it's going to waste, actually, it's not.
Could you give me an answer? How many feet from the front of this guy? Don't have that on me.
Um, so I believe it's kind of. That back is twelve, so it's probably gonna be a seven, that's gonna be. Where else would be four, five, four, five, four, okay, that's about, those would be like two to three to four to five.
Should be two variances.
One of them is five.
Front yard setback, eleven feet, and the side yard at five point four.
I really thought I'd need the five, but I couldn't do that.
That's front and side.
Thank you, anyone online? Okay, here, is that one? Okay, I would like to make a motion to close this portion, may I?
We'll make the motion.
Motion by Betty, seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I've got no problem with the variances. That's all.
Ready?
No.
We would like to make a motion to, for the first variance. We want to support him. Okay, we would like to make a motion for a little foot front yard setback.
I'll make the motion for fifty-one, twenty-four, East River Road, a front yard setback, variance of eleven feet.
Motion by Dan, seconded by. Excuse, what is my job, seconded by Dan? All in favor?
Hi.
And for fifty-one, twenty-four, East River Road, a side yard setback of five point four feet.
Okay, motion by John.
Also.
Dan, all in favor?
All right.
That guy's gonna be, answer the neighborhood, um, it looks very nice, so. It'll enjoy the, fuck you have more. It doesn't affect the neighborhood at all, that I can.
I agree. But. I was gonna run. No, last man, here for me. Everyone.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second by Dan, motion by Dan, seconded by. Yeah, I mean, I did the very, obviously, uh, seven forty-five.